Good evening. Today is August 14, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience here and welcome to those watching online. Director Anderson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great power of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Sacksy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed nay. The motion carries unanimously. Tonight we will start off with a Student Performance and Achievement Committee Literacy and Read Act Report with Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Welcome Director Oftedal.
Board Chair Word, Director of the Board, Superintendent Daniels. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share some valuable information about the reading performance and instruction of 191 students. This evening, I'm happy to be here to talk about the work being done to impact how students learn to read and how teachers are supporting those students at all levels of performance. The overview tonight will cover elementary, secondary literacy, proficiency benchmarks, growth trends, action plans, and a brief Read Act update. I begin with a broad view of how our elementary students in 191 have performed, being measured using our district screening tool of early reading for grades K and 1. This tool identifies foundational literacy skills and shares where our students are doing their strongest work. There were declines in kindergarten from last year, however, we do see stable performance for grade 1. Taking a look at grades 2 through 5 with FastBridge A Reading, which is more of a comprehension and vocabulary measurement, there are strong improvements in grades 3 and 5. While the bar graph gives us the picture of students by grade, the chart to the left allows you to see how the cohorts of students are progressing and gaining over time. Taking a look at middle school literacy and proficiency targets for FastBridge A Reading, we're looking now at grades 6 and this year, or this past year was the first year that we added students for grade 9 as part of our universal screening of all students. The middle school results continue to be inconsistent and wavers from grade to grade. You can also see the cohort chart and be able to see how cohorts are performing over time. Those are taking a look at our, the percentage of students who are meeting our proficiency benchmarks for grade level. However, there is another layer of story here, and that story has to do with how our Our next few slides, I want to highlight the measures of growth. In this, in these slides, growth is characterized as aggressive, which means students are making more than a year's worth of academic growth, typical, at least a year's worth of growth, modest, less than a year's worth of growth, flat, little to no growth, or no target. That indicates students who might be lacking either a fall or a spring score, so growth could not be calculated. Growth targets are calculated based on the student's score in the fall, regardless of where they may have scored, and the normative growth for a student that would be starting at that score at that grade level for the course of one year. The multicolored graph shows a lack of progress for our kindergarten students around growth targets. Seems very stable with, with very little change from last year to this year. However, it does show some positive progress in shifting students from modest to typical Our scores for first grade really did show a significant shift in students in the yellow who are only making modest or less than a year's worth of growth into a significant high, a greater proportion of students making at least a year's worth of growth. In the lower right-hand corner is another view of this combining both aggressive and typical, and typical growth into adequate growth for the year. So you can see the totals in a different view. Taking a look at the grade 2 through 3 grade band, there was notable growth for each grade level with a significant growth, increase from 38% to 46% for our grade 3 students. Our grade 3 students are students who have had consistent foundational literacy curriculum since they were in kindergarten. Taking a look at our grade 4, 5 band for growth scores, there were, there were significant increases in scores for grade 4 in the growth targets, however, there was a modest increase for grade 5. And then, we also disaggregated the data for race and ethnicity. There were a few changes amongst the, the different demographic groups, but a high, I wanted to highlight the significant growth for our Hispanic students in the intermediate grades. This is a group that has traditionally struggled with achievement in the past, and we have been putting into place new structures. These are also students who have not always had a significant background in foundational literacy, and we're trying to bridge that gap for them. In the middle grades, taking a look at grades 6 through 8, while you saw previously there have not been strong increases in the percentage of students meeting proficiency benchmarks, there is an increase in the percentage of students making adequate growth at all middle grade levels. And one group I wanted to call out specifically was our native and indigenous students. This group showed a growth increase from 33 to 47%, a noticeable 14% increase. While the group is relatively small in comparison to the other demographic groups at the school, about 12 to 15 students, the size of that group did not significantly change between the two years, and so giving us an adequate look at the, at that particular trend, and so it was a significance that should not be overlooked. Taking a look at our college and career readiness benchmarks around literacy, we, the ACT results moved us from grade level proficiency to more of this look at the readiness benchmarks. And the text complexity indicator, this reading score, it's a subgroup of the reading scores, really represents the student's progress toward understanding complex written material that is often required in college and career level, and career levels. The gold in these graphs represent the percentage of students meeting those college and career benchmarks compared with peers across the state. The state results for 2025 were not yet available. And then looking ahead to our response or our action items for the 25, 26 school year. In our responses, we include a continuous focus on foundational literacy with an emphasis on providing more intensive support for students with emerging English language skills. We will be looking at piloting a couple of different solutions, intervention solutions, especially for intermediate grades, knowing that those students come to us not only with limited English proficiency, maybe need to contrary, but they also are coming to us then lacking the foundational literacy skills that will allow them to progress. And so we're looking at some solutions and some tools. It's also year two of our 4th and 5th grade vocabulary morphology implementation. And then we will be continuing our Read Act training and the application of the Read Act training from this past year. Training and tools will be provided also to principals to strengthen their observation skills of classroom practice to ensure the fidelity of instruction. This continues to be an area of challenge for us is making sure that we are consistently in classrooms and coaching teachers inappropriate instructional strategies around foundational literacy that aligns with the Read Act training that they completed. We also have teacher steering committees that are engaged in the integration of the updated state English language standards. We have groups that are working at the high school level, middle school level, and at the elementary level to do this alignment. Dondra Brog, the multilingual project manager, has been collaborating with Sarah Noble, Associate Principal at Burnsville High School, to guide a team of, to create a more inclusive and evidence-based English language arts and multilingual instructional integration. This project is very complex, and it requires a restructuring of curriculum, but more importantly, of instructional strategies to make them more inclusive and allowing students with various multilingual needs to be able to access the language arts curriculum at the high school level, rather than being placed in separate courses that are just focused on English language development. I'm really excited about this particular project, and we know that the teachers are working very hard at this. Middle school staff and leaders have been collaborating with community education to support a house model where instruction for a group of students is shared by a more pure team of teachers. This is allowing us for a more structured intervention and support in reading and math for grades 6 and 7. We initially started this with grade 6 last year and now have revised and revamped it to provide a more supported, integrated structure for students with evidence-based interventions that we will be documenting in alignment with the school within the School Alternative Education, the SWAS, in order to generate funding for this integrated approach during the General Ed School Day. This allows for additional interventionists to be hired with this alternative education funding, as well as to support the extra staffing for this peer house model. Finally, we are also looking at, awaiting for the release of the approved reading interventions from the Department of Education, which are due out in November, for us to begin exploring those as our middle school and high school intervention pieces. And now, a quick update on the district compliance with the Read Act. As always, there are three components. The first is screening. Guidance for screening in grades 4 through 12 was released by MDE this spring. It does include a two-step screening process. All students must participate in a universal screening instrument, and that is a choice by us at the district as what instrument we would like to use. It is not being mandated for grades 4 through 12. Once those students have taken that screening instrument, any students that is, that does not read at grade level or meet that grade level benchmark is then required to use the MDE-approved CAPPY Read Basic for dyslexia screening. That will increase our screening cost for, of about $102,000 for this year. For curriculum, I've placed a three-year kind of look at how we're exploring our curriculum. We have foundational literacy curriculum, and we're working on that implementation, as you've seen over the last three years. But this year, we are exploring curriculum options for MDE-approved comprehensive knowledge-building language arts curriculums, and we do have some small micropilots. As you know, we practiced this in the past, and, and those are being generated from teachers, and we've had great success in those, and so we will be engaging in those in some of our intermediate grades. In 26, 27, we'll do a full curriculum review of our curriculum, our core curriculum, and make a recommendation for implementation of one of the MDE-approved curriculums for the 27, 28 year. We estimate the cost for that implementation to be about $500,000. Our foundational literacy implementation, which runs parallel to our comprehensive, will also have the continuing cost of about $99,000 per year. In terms of professional development, I just want to acknowledge just the tremendous amount of work and investment, energy, and engagement on the part of so many of our staff this past year. We had over 328 teachers and administrators and coordinators enrolled in Read Act training this past year. We have a 90% completion rate as of July 30. Over 300 people have completed all of the training within one year. That's 67 hours of online and live training over the course of a school year while they were all teaching full-time. This is a tremendous achievement, and I also want to do a call-out to our elementary principals. Our elementary principals, each one of them committed to completing the training with their staff, and each one of them created the environment and the support for that to happen during the Contracted School Day. These administrators made that commitment and modeled that learning for their staff, and their staff truly appreciated it. They, I heard the, I heard the comments over and over again, "We couldn't have done this without my principal showing us how to do it as well." And so, just a huge amount of kudos to those folks. And the, the response for the training was, was really incredible. And so, I'm just so pleased by such a huge initiative and having so many people working toward that final goal. I'm so excited for them to continue on with the application of the learning that they had through the Read Act training as they continue to do their foundational and comprehensive literacy implementations. Also strengthens our principals as they work on those observation and feedback tools with classroom instruction, because now they've had the same training as the teachers, and they're able to use the same language for their feedback. It really is momentous. We do have about 60 additional staff who need to participate this year in the Phase 1 training. I will give a lot of compliments to the state of Minnesota. About a third of the staff that we are hiring are coming to us with the completed Read Act training, and so we're really excited about that as well, because they're ready to go and join our staff. Literacy training for 125 or more educational assistants will also take place in August. This is one of the requirements from the Read Act as well, is that any educational assistant or paraprofessional who is assisting with academics also have a background in foundational literacy. And so we are, have two staff members, Katie Ness, who is our new elementary coordinator, and Kim Zonag Hammer, who is a teacher on special assignment in the Student Support Services office and has been leading, reading intervention review with the special ed staff, have both become trainers with the Department of Education and are able to conduct that training for us on-site. So it's, it's eight hours of training, and we're really excited to bring more people into the fold so that they can continue to support with strong instructional strategies. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Amina. Is there any comments or questions from board members? Director.
Thank you, Chair Word. Thank you again, Amina, for your report. Just a couple of questions. Going back to the implementation of new core curriculum, can you shed some light on when was the last time that we did that, and a little more context?
Yep. So the last time that we adopted a new core curriculum was in 2016, and so our curriculum is coming up as being no longer in print, and so we are looking at either replacing it with the newest addition of what we have. However, the curriculum that we have right now was not one that was identified by MDE as being highly aligned with the science of reading, and so we're really wanting to take a look at that. And so it will have been nine years and time for us to take another view.
Kind of coupling up a couple of perfect stories to make sure we're up to date.
Right.
Great, thank you. You mentioned in your report that the middle school results tend to waver, and I'm wondering why you think that might be, and first, and second, what are we doing differently?
Great questions. I don't know if I have a clear answer as to the inconsistency for the scores. Some of it's related to cohorts, but some of it also has to do with the fact that we don't have a clear foundational reading or reading instruction that happens after grade 6. And so what we're measuring are reading skills, but we're teaching literature and writing. And so that's the nature of the standards, but not all of our students have those proficiency levels as yet. The question of what are we doing differently is an excellent question, and there are two pieces. One is, is that we're looking at introducing the vocabulary and morphology components that we're doing in 4th and 5th grade. There is a third level to that, and we're looking at expanding that into grade 6 to kind of boost that consistency, and then thinking about what would be the value of offering it for our 7th grade students who hadn't had that instruction for, for those years. And so, really trying to cycle in, because our diagnostic data is showing that our students are, are, most of our students have strong foundational literacy skills. The students that are in that yellow range that are still not quite meeting benchmark are showing weaknesses in vocabulary and comprehension, and so trying to invest more strategies in that. And the vocabulary morphology piece is one of those pieces that have been identified through the state standards and through the science of reading as being helpful for that. So that's one of the pieces, is taking a look at that curricular resource. The other one is really looking at our flex win time and making that much more highly structured. And so, we've created a list of evidence-based interventions that meet with the Alternative Learning Center's criteria for interventions. We hope to expand that the more that we get information from the Department of Education. And, and also looking at implementing continuous progress monitoring, so not only increasing the resource of having more interventionists there to work with students, but we're also training then our general ed teachers in ELA in both 6th and 7th grade on how to deliver some of the broader interventions around vocabulary and comprehension, which they may not have been trained for as secondary language arts teachers, and providing that support and that instruction. So really focusing in on that flex win time and the training of our language arts teachers to do some of those broader tier-one interventions.
Awesome. Thank you, that was really helpful. School within a school, just wanted to say how excited I am to hear about, you know, that extra scoop of learning for our students, extra funding, and extra FTE to make, make a difference for the students, and that was, that was really great to hear. And that was it? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
Up next, we will receive a report about our district assessment plan from Dr. Brandon Lo, the district's assessment data and research coordinator. Welcome, Dr. Lo.
Thank you, Board Chair Word, Directors, Superintendent Dr. Daniels. Thank you for, for giving me an opportunity to just talk about our comprehensive assessment plan for next school year, and so for the school year that has begun, really. The hope is that at the next meeting, the comprehensive assessment plan will be approved, and this is pursuant to our policy 614, that we come back every year and just look at the assessment plan, make any adjustments that need to be made. So that is, that is here. I'll highlight in just a second some of the changes to this year's plan, just so that you'll have that in mind. Not a ton of things have changed between last year and this, but I'll highlight those. But before I do, I just want to, just, just talk briefly about our school assessment coordinators. It is, it is very, very common, I've been doing assessment for a while, and it's very common for, at the end of state assessment season, usually June, July, districts will get reports back from the state saying, not just your scores, but we'll find out from the state that this student, this student, this student has been identified as a student who has cheated, because they've found, they've found their assessment in another place, or they have, they've copied a response from some other place. And so, lots of work happens at state levels from these assessment systems, and every summer we get that back. It is not uncommon, trust me. But I am just really happy to say to you, this year, we had zero reports of irregularities from MDE. So that, that is an accomplishment. It's maybe not an accomplishment that we talk about very often, because it's rare to get, you know, to get that back with, without any changes or, or any irregularities reported. I'll also say that we were audited multiple times, some surprise audits from MDE. Again, that's a reg, that's a normal occurrence, and we had zero, zero recommendations for improvements at any of our audited sites. So a really strong year for test security. That's something that our school assessment coordinators have worked really, just very, very hard on at their sites. They, they work with the classroom teachers to provide, to provide students with comfortable, positive test environments that are also secure. So any issues that have existed this year, they were caught at the classroom level and stopped, you know, stopped there. So I'm really, really proud of the work that they did, and, and I just wanted to call your attention to that. For this coming year's comprehensive assessment plan, the, there are just a couple of changes, like I said. The one, Dr. Art, sorry, Amina already mentioned is the addition of the CAPPY Basics diagnostic. That's coming about because of Read Act. It is not a, it is not an assessment that we, you know, got to go in and select by doing a review or anything like that. That will be administered to students in grades, grades 4 and above who have taken FastBridge and have identified, have been identified as below benchmark. So they will, they will then take an additional, you know, this additional test that's online. And, you know, the hope of this additional diagnostic is that we can, we can help out any students who may be dyslexic, you know, that, that we're seeing those. FastBridge can, is, is a broad screener that is going to identify biggies, and then the idea is that CAPPY, CAPPY Basics is going to hone in a little more and try to find what issues might exist if the student's not reading at grade level. So there's that, that change. There's also additional clarification on, for students in grades 2 and 3, in the same way, when they take FastBridge, if they are not, if, if they're not performing at grade level, then they have to take an additional, an additional piece of FastBridge for foundational literacy skills. So what, what MDE has, has asked us to do is to look at, to look at one of the sub-tests of the early reading, so the test for kindergarten and first graders, nonsense words, and to administer nonsense words to those students in grades 2 and 3 who aren't reading at, at benchmark. So it's just an additional follow-up test, again, with the hopes to identify and pinpoint some needs that might exist there. And then the final thing. And then, the final thing, last year, you might remember, we expanded our Fast Bridge screening to include ninth grade. This year, we're taking it one step more and expanding to tenth grade. So, you know, we have that cohort of students who are going into tenth grade right now. It's normal for them. They've only—they've only had Fast Bridge, you know, so this is—this is just kind of growing up with them. Those are the changes to the year. Of course, I'm available for questions if you have any. But otherwise, that's it. That'll be the point your attention to.
Thank you. Are there any comments from—or questions from board members? Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Wurth. Thank you, Dr. Lo. Appreciate your report. First, I appreciated your sharing about the systematizing of the coordination of assessment and the difference that that has made. You know, that movement is just really welcome and the outcome this year. You know, kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
And just kind of a big-picture question. I believe this is the second or third year that we've received this report?
It is. This is the second year we've done it like this. I think the year before that, it was more of a presentation of just bigger things. But yeah, the second year.
Second year, okay. And it's a state mandated report. I'm just wondering, how have you found this report helpful in your work, Dr. Lo? And also, how is this overall helping what we do in 191?
Thanks for asking me to reflect on that. I—I—I think that what it does for us is it just provides clarity, a vision. You know, in the beginning, when—you know, when I stepped into this role, we were—we were doing this. We—you know, we had a plan. I think that combining it all for this purpose into just this one comprehensive place, it helps not just us stay focused as an organization on the system at hand, but it also is a good communication tool. We—you know, this is not—this document that you have is not just something that, you know, we in the room look at. Teachers ask for it. We send it out—we send it out all the time. I mean, I get requests for it all the time throughout the school year. And it's—you know, because a teacher is looking for a point of clarification on a specific—on a specific thing. Sometimes, they're just looking for dates, you know, and that's also—that's also helpful. It's a public document that we post on our website. You know, frequently, we might get requests from parents where the answer is in the comprehensive assessment plan. And so, we'll give them the answer and also direct them there in case they have, you know, further follow-up questions. So, I think that it's helped focus the work, and it's been a—it's been a good place to just—you know, kind of keep everyone aligned, keep everyone on the same page.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any comments? Okay. Thank you. We will now receive a report about updates made to this year's student handbook. Here to present this information is Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chris Belmont. Welcome.
Thanks, Chair Wurth. Members of the board, Superintendent Daniels, thanks for having me for this—this annual presentation of our 2025-26 student handbook. Our leaders were in extensively this week as we're preparing for the school year launch. And this is a—this is a really nice reference point, our student handbook, to help us start out right and then continue on in good, safe, and positive fashion. And I haven't always done a presentation, but I know we have some board members and the superintendent to just see our process for student handbook development. But some board members that have been around might recall that we went through some extensive changes after the 2023 legislative session, less content changes to present to you today, but still walking you through all of those and responding to any questions you might have. One of the things I feel most proud of is we continue to add voice to the student handbook development. So, we have board policy and state laws, kind of that framework, that bedrock. We consult the Minnesota School Board Association Model Student Handbook as well. And we just keep adding voices and perspectives to our team. This last spring, I think we had sixteen team members representing different roles, as you can kind of see here on the slide. And then, they go out and collect input, and then we have kind of a choreo-in process where we just keep at it. I want to say thank you to all the administrators, community members, parents, student perspectives that just go into this because it is somewhat laborious. Not as laborious as some of the technical work that Sarah and Carrie do to also make sure that it gets prepared, so. So, thank you to all who helped give that the direction it needs. Some new features in this year's draft, a new superintendent letter with a new superintendent picture. The—our policies, our student attendance team, that's a new team based on the pilot work that's been done from the legislature down to our school district. That team produced a lot of information that went into some of our handbook changes that you can find on page seven, as well as quite a bit of policy review committee work, and then board adoption of policy 524, personal communication devices, mainly around cellphones and other electronics, added to some of the content changes that we're preparing to launch if approved. Then, there's some incremental changes, just fixing different pieces. Human growth and development changing from—just changing the fourth and fifth grade based on recommendations from our health care experts and our child development experts. Students then receive a more comprehensive human growth and development unit in health in seventh grade at school. Student data privacy, just making sure that we're aligned with the insignificant—or, yeah, insignificant changes to directory information in Minnesota state law over the last few years. Adding law enforcement to one of our responses around some serious offenses, weapons, just to help tell the story better. Sometimes, there's after-all these calls that administrators will make, or they won't have access to a school resource officer, so we added law enforcement. And then, just aligning dress code, updating that to—you know, really modernizing it and aligning it to policy. Some other incremental changes had to do with just some of the—we're working with Dr. Lo and our administrators on our behavior response guide, just making sure that if we're delineating between minor and major behaviors, it's—minor behaviors tend to be in that level one, level two category, major behaviors falling in that level three and four, so just being a little more clear with serious instances that we also report to MBE, things like bullying, harassment, threat, intimidation. Some of our processes have shifted over the last several years, which would not really give administrators that need to look at a level-two response to some of those things. So, we took it out, same for level three with weapons. It doesn't require certain things in certain situations for administrators, but it definitely helps zero it on the severity of the situation and gives just a little clearer guidance for how best to respond. Then, we worked with law enforcement just to update some of the examples of weapons that align stronger to state law. Next steps, if approved, we'll make sure we're really rolling out communication plans. We worked our principles this week and just imagined new ways to help get the essence and the values and the—yeah, the values of the student handbook all into the eyes and ears of all of our students, staff, and families, really trying to be proactive and caring and responsive to our—to what we really believe should happen in our community. More proactive and less reactive, and we believe that the student handbook can provide a really good tool. Yeah, our Ds and our SSLs are coming together even next week to work with Dr. Lo and myself and really just get calibrated, really work to—to make sure that we're aligned across our system and how we're leveraging the student handbook for positive proactive prevention of behaviors that we don't—that would interfere with learning. One, September 15th, we'll attend a law conference at Kennedy and Grayling with a few other administrators, and we'll start assessing any changes from the state law and that—or policy, and then moving into practice as we look to just constantly refine and look at our 26, 27 development. So, I was here to take a little—a few extra minutes this year to let me walk you through how this handbook is made. Back to you, Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Wurth. Thank you for—that presentation. It provides really helpful context to what you all have been working on and what we can Going to page eight of the student handbook, I know you did a really beautiful job of kind of clarifying for me on the questions about tardy versus, you know, absence and the response to that. If I'm looking at number three, where it says, "Students are expected to be in their assigned classroom or learning space, in person or virtual, on time and for the full day. Students missing a portion of the day or period will be marked as tardy." Now, based on how I read this language, I'm interpreting that to mean that if I, as a student, show up late to class, whether it's one minute or 20 minutes late, I'm going to be marked tardy. Is that correct?
Yeah, that—that would be how we interpret policy 503, the language there.
So, there's—because I guess my—what my mind goes to is that, you know, talking about being aligned across our—across our system, making sure that we have equitable practices in our classrooms so that regardless of what teacher a student might have, you know, they know if I'm—if I'm a minute late or 20 minutes late, I'm going to have—I'm going to have to answer tonight my parents and the administrator.
Yes, that's correct. It's definitely a scenario that our attendance handbook team is wrestling with, how best to make sure that we are really aligned and equitable in our responses to those kind of things. We, our attendance team, and I know that's a different presentation from Director Pietrowski and her team, they've—they've really been trying to figure out—we've gone through a lot of different codes that have been presented over the years that is not just giving us really valuable data, or they're just not—they're essentially not living in our system, they're just sitting there. So, one of the codes they're looking at is missed significant instruction, to just name that a tardy occurred and the student was gone for a significant amount of time. And so, our success teams can look at that data, find out if it's occurring more regularly at certain times, classrooms, or by student, so they can interview better.
So, then, you're saying—that's interesting. So, you're saying that a student that misses a significant portion of the class one day and then is late five minutes, they would have one mark—they would have two marks. One would be for the extended at tardy, and one that would be just a tardy.
I would have to double-check with the attendance team. I—I'm not sure they've totally—I'm not—I haven't seen the exact model. My assumption is that it would be—it would be one marked tardy with some additional information through that code that they missed significant instruction.
And the one that was shorter would just be a tardy? Yeah. I think I see any shaking.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, if you are interested?
Yeah, sure.
We've been spending enough time together.
Okay, so, the reason that we want that missed significant instruction is so when our attendance teams in the buildings are reviewing the data, that is actually data for us to look at so that we can have some talking points with families, with students if they're older, and really begin to look at that information to get down to the why and see if we can break down some barriers for that. So, as a family or as a parent, you would not see that missed significant instruction anywhere on the report card. The report cards only report the tardies and the absences, excused or unexcused or whatever. That's the only thing that our families will see. But that missed significant instruction will be marked a tardy for what you see, but the data behind it, we will be able to dig more into that so that we can get into whatever reasons that we have for those pieces and kind of begin to look for that. I mean, when—you know, a tardy is about five minutes late, you're late, but 20 minutes late, you've missed significant instruction in a 44 or 48-minute class.
So, more actionable when it's significantly missed, but we keep track of all of it.
That's our goal with this missed significant instruction, so that we can really tie that piece down.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your report. Next, we have a report from our new superintendent of schools here at District 191, Dr. Latanya Daniels.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be on the other side of that desk right now, but I'm happy to join you all this evening as the new superintendent of District 191. I'd just like to share, we are six weeks in working with the team, and we are sprinting to the first day of school. We've had an exciting week with our principals and also district-level leaders joining us yesterday for some leadership, professional development. We've also welcomed our building leadership team members here today to work with their principals to develop their school improvement plans. Tomorrow, we have the Community Resource—Community Education Resource Fair. Next Thursday, we have our State of the District, our State of the Schools address that's being hosted here at Diamond Head, and—well, co-hosted with the city of Burnsville and Savage and with Dr. Funson, also working with him, so we are excited about that. We welcome back new teachers this upcoming Monday, and we welcome everyone back on Monday, August 25th. So, we are sprinting and preparing for the start of the school year. Everyone has done an excellent job, rolling out professional development and training and support of a successful start to the school year, and I'm just looking forward to what the year will bring via venture. So, excited to be here and excited to be working with you and the team. That's my report.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? All right. Thank you for your report. Do board members have any reports they wish to share? Just a reminder that we have our committee report scheduled for August 28th. Oh, you do. I'm sorry. I have to play somebody else. Director Chestnut, sorry.
Yeah, on Tuesday, August 5th, I attended Ron Elementary's night two night party, and it was very well-attended. The bouncy house was the place to be. And there was just so many several families and faculty there, so it was really a fun thing.
Okay. Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Wurth. Yes, same evening. Some of us congregated at city—Burnsville City Hall. Dr. Daniels was there, Dr. Belmont, Principal Sandoval, Director Hume. I had the pleasure of riding around with Burnsville Fire Department, and it was really great to get to meet our senior citizens as well as families. In July, kind of backing up a little bit, I also was pleased to attend the International Festival, again, a great celebration of our community, and also wonderful to see, you know, members of our community, our families. And then, in June, I was also honored to be invited to attend a career exploration event for local youth, which was sponsored by Daras Salon. The event was very well-attended with standing room only, and there were at least 150 participants. Basically, it was designed to share options and opportunities with families and students. Speakers included professionals from the region who shared their knowledge and experiences. And the goal, of course, was to get families and students on the same page in terms of where opportunities live and how to go after them. Community speakers also highlighted 191 pathways as one such opportunity for families and students.
students. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Well, I also attended Night to Unite. But this was, I was excited because this is my first year getting to go ride around with, I got to go with the fire department as well, and visited three different neighborhoods, and it was just really great to connect with our community and be out talking with families. So, it was very enjoyable, so. All right. Now we will move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Director Chester. Second by Director Mickelson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Onto new business. Up first on our agenda, we will hear from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Kevin Kleiner, Director of Athletics, as they present a recommendation to approve the 2025-2026 Athletics and Activities Handbook. Welcome to you both.
Thanks again, Chair Wurk. Superintendent Daniels, and members of the board. Happy to be here to present the 2025-26 Burnsville High School Student Athletics and Activities Handbook. Use the sports term, I'm pinch hitting for Associate Principal Heim, so I'm going to hand the mic off to E.D. Kleiner and get going.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Board Chair Wurk, Superintendent Dr. Daniels, and other members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Highlights of the, you know, this is updating it on a yearly basis, so a lot of updates with the change that we did a month or so ago with all the fees, so that's been updated, and then just updating personnel, you know, coaches and advisors that have changed in those positions. Some of the big highlights, a couple activities that just outdated weren't in there anymore, so those have been removed, or clubs, I should say, not activities, different clubs that have been removed, so just, you know, getting it as updated as possible with the start of new, new school year. So, that's about the long and short of it.
Yeah. Some of the things that Mr. Heim wanted to point out, the neurodivergent disabled coalition, that's a new group. The Polygot Club, I hadn't heard of that, but a group that comes together just around different language and culture, that's, is a new exciting addition at the high school. I'm just personally so proud of all that we offer our students to try to match their brilliance and their passions and let them shine. So, yeah, it's fun to look over this list and see those changes. Back to you Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Athletics and Activities Handbook? Moved by Director Anderson. Second. Selected by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All of them in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the changes to the Boys and Girls Alpine Ski Cooperative. Here to present the recommendation is Athletics Director Kevin Kleiner. Welcome Director Kleiner.
Hey, good evening, Board Chair Wurk, Superintendent Dr. Daniels, and members of the board. This is, it seems like a lot, but it's really, a lot is procedural in the associate high schooling. You have to dissolve a current co-op even to just add a school, like we're going to do, attempt to do here tonight by adding Ridgefield High School into our Alpine Ski Co-op, but formally you have to dissolve each one separately, different gender, boys and girls, Alpine, two different ones, and then remake, reapply and make the new co-ops, adding, essentially adding Ridgefield, but it's forming a new brand one. So, formality is there, but that is the, the kind of procedural why behind it, just to add more viability to the program, having another school. Even some of it's logistics with Buck Hill is where we all go and they're getting tighter on their parameters, like you have to have X number or you don't get a lane to practice with. So just having another partner in this to have, to hit that number on a yearly basis to make sure we get kind of our training lane. Without that, it'd be really difficult to even have the sport. So, that, that would be the why, just, and also financially, it will help kind of spread the cost out in the sport amongst three schools instead of just two. So, there's some realities there financially that will be helpful. So, we're excited to maybe get some momentum in that sport back by having another partner join us, and so that's, that's the request to add Ridgefield High School in Alpine Ski for Boys Alpine and Girls Alpine Ski. Thank you. Back to you Chair.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation related to the Alpine Ski Cooperative? Moved by Director Saxi.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? Director Hume?
Yeah, I've just been curious about the fees for the co-ops. Does a student from Burnsville pay the same as a student from Shakopee as a student from Ridgefield, or like is there any kind of coordination around the fees that students pay for the cooperatives?
Great question. They pay what their local school charges, whatever that is, then there's, then from there, the expenses are shared. So like, we'll, as the host school, have the money flow in and out of us, but then we'll charge it back to Shakopee and Ridgefield in this case, in terms of coaching salaries and all that kind of stuff, any Buck Hill fees, transportation fees, then the expenses get shared. But, so it's kind of their revenue coming in for their fees that will help them pay, pay us back for their portion, and probably on top of that, their revenue.
So it's possible that a student from one district would pay more to be on the same team as a student from a district.
Correct. And some of that is just even from a systematic registration system and their student information data and that kind of stuff, so any school has in their, you know, in their policies and their fee structure and how they, how they do that, so yes. Long answer to your question, yes, they could all be paid differently.
That's what I assumed, but I heard some chatter and was just curious, so thank you.
Director Alt?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your diligence, doing the due diligence to explore how else we can, you know, solidify these opportunities for our students and for going after it, making sure that, you know, thinking, thinking it through and adding the extra schools so that, you know, we can continue to offer this for, for our students. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, is, oh, wait, sorry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep. Up next, we will now consider approval of the 2025-2026 Student Handbook. Presenting this recommendation will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome back, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you Chair. I'm here seeking board approval for the new 25-26 Student Handbook that's intended to provide guidance for students, families, and staff regarding procedures for conducting safe and effective school experiences for all. The handbook is intended to support existing policy and law.
Is there a motion to approve the student handbook for the upcoming school year? Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve, on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 634, Electronic Technologies Acceptable Use. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be once again, Dr. Chris Belmont.
Thank you Chair. The, this Policy 634, Electronic Technologies Acceptable Use was deliberated on with our Policy Review Committee on June 17th, and the, the only substantive change is that language around personal electronic communication devices was removed because of the inception of Policy 524.
Is there a motion to approve the changes to Policy 634? Moved by Director Anderson. Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next policy on the agenda is to approve on a first and final reading basis, changes to Policy 524, Personal Electronic Communication Devices, including cell phones. Once again, presenting the recommendation is Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you Chair. So this is the aforementioned Policy 524. This is exciting. Yep, yeah. And this policy was reviewed by our committee. It's a new policy for ISD 191, and it, and our committee on July 29th, at a special review committee meeting, it changed, it include, the policy that was originally adopted by the board is amended with a very minor change. We found an inconsistency to one term, so.
Is there a motion to approve the changes to Policy 524?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Director Hume.
So the agenda and recommendation say first reading, and I believe I heard you say first and final just a moment ago, so I just want to be clear, is this first and final or first reading?
It says first and final.
Okay. The agenda says first, that's why I'm asking.
So, I'm sorry, I read what's in here, it says on a first and final reading basis.
Board book says first reading, that's why I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, so board book is wrong?
I believe it was going to be the first reading, I'm not sure if I get to do the first and final.
I don't know, I shouldn't, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
I believe it was going to be a first reading, it was in the script that it just said first and final.
Oh, okay, so that's an error?
Yeah, in the script.
In the script, okay. Well, I'm sorry, then it's a first reading, sorry. Okay, that's corrected. It's a first reading.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Related to Policy 524, a set of regulations have been developed, and Dr. Belmont will be presenting the recommendations for approval to these regulations on a first reading basis. Dr. Belmont.
Thank you Chair. So, also at that special meeting, that special Policy Review Committee meeting on July 29th of this year, a regulation was put forth to give administrators and staff and families and students just more clarity around how best to navigate Policy 524, personal electronic devices. The regulation includes just different, the definition of who does what in response, roles and responsibilities for students and staff, the kind of, how best to manage both the goal of proactive, keeping cell phones away from disrupting, disrupting learning, and then the reactive, how best to manage if the students really struggle with that Surveys and data collection will occur in the first few months of implementation to help determine that the policy and regulations are being implemented effectively and equitably, because this is a new policy and a new regulation, the review committee is really thoughtful and, and is, is charging us as, as school district officials to make sure that we're leaning into this new change and reporting back in one way or another.
Is there a motion to approve the newly developed regulations for Policy 524?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? Director Hume?
I just want to say thank you. I know a lot, 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 lot of work has gone into this over the last, seems like many months, so thank you, and thank you to you and to Director Alt for having a special meeting of the policy committee in July when we typically wouldn't need to, so we can have this finalized before the start of the school. I think this is going to be a lot clearer for families and students in the district and for staff, which is one of the goals that we had when we talked about this back in the spring, so thank you for all the work that's gone in.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate that myself, like I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I think it was, you know, really necessary to clarify this for this faculty, students, staff, everybody. I do have a question about, so this, where is this being published as far as, will it be alongside the, in the policy handbook, or where, where is this going? Is it?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. Regulations are posted in, on our website in connection with the, the policy that it's conceived from, so.
Okay.
It'll be underneath 524, more or less is how it reads on our website. And to your point Chair, like if approved tonight and going forward with second reading, we'll continue, we're going to continue that work of making sure that we operationalize it really successfully here, that we learn from other school districts and schools that these first six weeks of really launching a regulation like this are so important to helping get all the adults on the same page, being really both like compassionate and clear with students about the expectations, and then communicating with families, because just like all of the items in our student handbook, it's very possible that home expectations may differ than, differ from community expectations, so helping people to connect those dots.
Yeah. Thank you.
So that will be our work.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will now move to our final item on our agenda. We are being asked to approve a joint powers of agreement for inter-agency early intervention services between Dakota County and ISD 191. Here to present this recommendation is Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
Hi, good evening, Director Wurk, Dr. Daniels, and members of the board. I am here to bring forward a joint powers agreement that allows the partnership between us and Dakota County for the early intervention services. These services support our families and our children, who have children, birth of three, who qualify for early childhood special education services. Key aspects of this joint power agreement that we work with them is that they, we partner with them to offer nursing consultation, consultation and service coordination to school districts personnel who are working with the families with children with significant disabilities, and facilitating meetings between Dakota County inter-agency and the district, as well as coordinating the distribution and information and materials. Dakota County also attends the Region 11, Region 11 meetings, and then they bring that information back to the member districts in Dakota County. So these services are vital for assisting our families and medically fragile children under the age of three and staying informed in all the changes and processes and available resources that are essential to ensure our families get what they need. Please, I recommend that the Board of Education approve and authorize Superintendent Dr. Daniels to sign the joint powers agreement for inter-agency early intervention services between District 191 and Dakota County.
Is there a motion to approve the joint powers of agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. This concludes the regular portion of our business meeting. Next on our agenda is a work session to discuss the board planning document for the 2025-2026 school year to review Policy 206, Listening Session Protocols and Guidelines, and finally to review and discuss Dr. Daniels' goal, goals for this year. Before starting that work session, I move that we take a brief recess and return to the dais at 7:50 to begin our work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by myself and seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries. Please return to the dais at 7:50. Please return to the dais at 7:50. So the first thing is the board development goals, setting, board development goal setting and self-eval. So for August, we have the summer seminar. I don't think anybody answered that though.
Well, I think we're just reviewing to see if these are stuff that we want.
To keep on here, okay.
Okay. So just to clarify, this is kind of like what we use year to year? Yes, I want to update it for this year.
Exactly, and typically, so depending on the year, we might have, like last year we added Read Act, right? And this is just kind of the document that Dr. Daniels and officers use to kind of plan out our agendas. It helps the staff to, you know, kind of plan things out, kind of in an organized way, yeah. And this would be this year, our opportunity to update this for the, for the school year. I didn't see anything that I would suggest for changing with board development.
Okay.
But I don't know if anybody else did.
I would agree, but I did note that it is an odd year and in September is the time to start talking to MSBA about doing our board self-evaluation later in the fall.
Yep.
So, it's already almost September. And for those who are newer, we do an evaluation with MSBA. Every year we do a more, more in-depth one in the odd numbered years and then a shorter one in the even numbered years typically, which helps, can help define our board goals and such for the year.
So, do we need to keep the work session to finalize changes to the Superval tool? Because we're not reviewing.
Oh, you moved to Superval?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
It's just me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Very sorry. I'm sorry, did anyone else have anything? I thought we were done talking about board development. Did anyone else have anything on board development? Okay. For Superval, because I guess I'm not remembering why we, I mean, I felt like maybe we had a work session to review the changes. Is that because we made the changes to it because of it being updated every year? Is that why we're doing it? Okay, because I was like thinking maybe it's because when we, the year that you switched to the Google Doc, I was getting confused.
I think it's because we typically, and it's the next thing, I think on the workshop for the work session for tonight is reviewing the superintendent's goals and wanting to make sure those are incorporated into the review document. So that, because that's what we're evaluating the superintendent on in part is their annual goals.
Okay, maybe we could word it differently.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, because it makes it sound like we're redoing the tool itself.
Committee, updates.
Updates, yes.
Good choice of words.
For that, I did have, uh, one thing. Oh, in February, the executive assistant creates two documents, one for the self-eval and the second for the board evaluation. And then at end of February, the link is sent to the superintendent to complete. It's one piece that I noticed was missing.
Maybe it's in our process but not in the board.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
We definitely need to get that added in here.
And then, I think from there, it kind of flows.
He physically updates this document?
Sarah. This, this document?
Like this one right here?
Sarah, yep.
So do you want me to write down what we're updating?
I believe we're recording this.
So, so she'll just, you know, from that, or?
After doing, if you have either, I'm gonna have Sarah, she.
Okay. I just wanted to verify.
She already told me she was on air.
Okay, okay. Hi Sarah. Does anybody have, anyone else have any suggestions for the Superval?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, so then we want to go down to board, board priorities.
Our budget.
Oh, sorry, budget, I'm sorry. I was going to go to budget, I don't know why I did that, a budget, okay. So, the, my screen is not working.
There's a placeholder for pretty much every meeting from January to June for a work session or some sort of a budget.
Yeah.
Update, which based on previous years is probably appropriate.
I think, though, if we're scratching the work session for budget planning, wouldn't that, in February, wouldn't that be added in March? As opposed to just a strike through?
Yeah.
March or February? It was crossed out in January.
Oh, January, sorry.
January, put it in if, if I could filter and hold them.
I know. I keep having to go look up and do a month and it's so confusing.
So, January, yes, that work session, if we're not doing it in January, I'm imagining we are going to do that in February? Unless the presenting of the current reality and parameters covers that. Was that something your staff had talked about, Dr. Daniels?
Yeah, we're gonna keep going, yet to start your Board Planning Document. It will be, I think, we initially started separating open enrollment numbers, our assumptions, our projections. December, choosing taxation, January, we do our revised budget. We have the middle of February into March, but also March.
I kind of look like it's already in there, because it's like work session.
Well, there's a work session in March, I don't know why we have one in February.
Very next, the February one has the.
Oh, yeah, placeholder.
February needs a work session, yeah.
Okay, so remove placeholder and just put work session.
Right.
Okay.
Because the point is, we want to be able to back map to April, which is when the HR events. Yeah, we did, yeah.
Okay. There's like a work session every month, except for January. Do you see anything else? Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to Board Priorities. So, that's when we approve the Board Priorities for the coming year.
Right, and that's the MOU that we have with the BEA to protect specially licensed staff. And, yeah, it comes forward in, I can't tell if it's May or June.
We had a work session.
May, yeah, work session, and then.
No, I think it's August, it looks like it is when it's the actual approving.
Yep.
So, that must be the next meeting.
Yep.
So, I noticed that other ones say, like, at the first meeting or at the second meeting, does it matter?
For this one, not really. I think the intention was to give flexibility, so that whether it's the first or second meeting, yeah.
Okay, moving on to onboarding.
So, is this something that happens every year after an election if there's new board members? Does that need to be said, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, maybe it's just in the box, onboarding as needed.
Onboarding new board members as needed.
Because it's not necessarily after an election.
Right, yes.
It could be after an appointment also.
Yes, yep.
So, we'll change that to onboarding new board members as needed.
It doesn't necessarily follow the months, just this progression of time.
Right, yeah, because the details of the mentoring is in the document. Unless we wanted to spell it out, but again, if we have some people starting in January and some people starting in May, the months, months get mixed up.
Okay, um, are we good there? Uh, so, policy, that's monthly committee meetings.
And I think the only thing I would add that's not here is the monthly review meetings between the Policy Chair and the Superintendent. Because that is, that is something that we do.
It's gonna be underneath the, because we want better graphics underneath that, and it would just understand that it's for every month.
Yeah.
Okay, what about legislative? Yeah, I think the only thing I would add in, because it seems to be an annual thing, is what we're gonna discuss on Tuesday. And for August, we have to identify priorities for which group is it? Scale. So, we have to, we have to create, fill out a form in August for scale to identify their, you know, to help identify legislative priorities. And then, for November, I would only add in that it's based on state, you know, like those things, as well as MSBA and scale and AMSD's release of their priorities.
Yep, that makes sense.
I don't know if this fits in here, so I apologize, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating. But also, the AMSD asks for, like, our legislative platform in August?
Oh, they want forms too? Okay, so there's two questions to be filled out. I don't know if they, I think the district, the district filled that out, right? I've never done it either. I'm just gonna remember the scale one. And then, the other thing I would, because I don't believe once we've approved or adopted our legislative platform, just because of the start of session, that we've scheduled a forum with our state representatives and legislators, representatives and senators. It's that we've kind of moved it to, we meet with them on the Hill.
Sure.
And then that's when we get scheduled to have meetings in March to present our agenda. But I think it was always hard to get them to all come here on the same day, at the same time.
I think it happened, it's happened once, maybe twice.
And not everybody was able to make it.
Not everybody made it, yeah.
So, I think we have much more traction when we're in March.
If they're at the legislature that day.
If they're at the legislature that day. I know, we still leave stuff with their staff. And we email them.
But they're very busy, so it's understandable.
And we stalk them, but yeah, that's right.
Do we still invite legislators to the committee meetings?
We, I mean, maybe, maybe after an election, if they're new, I think that's what we should do. Is there, you know, we have a fairly good.
Had the same one for a while.
So, that would be going, probably December.
December, yep.
Before the, after the election, but before the session begins?
Yeah, the session, I mean, the session normally doesn't always start until February, but they get kind of busy and settled in in January.
Right.
And spring, so. So, December would be ideal, between December and January.
So, just put a placeholder for December and January.
Are we good on that? Okay. Uh, so, next is election, so that's not an every, every year thing either. We should put, it says on even years.
Says on, yeah.
Oh, it says on even years?
It says even years. I didn't make that change last year. Until you get to taking office, and then it's, of course, the odd years. In January.
I don't think, anything, anything doesn't need to be changed on there, does it?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, next, we have Student Performers and Achievement Committee.
And I'm assuming Nina would have let us know if anything needed to change.
Okay. Annual events. And it's, I mean, it's all up to date to me, has anybody seen anything that's not on there? Okay, we have the Read Act update. Um, well, we just got our report, so that's on here for August. Do we need to add quarterly, why are the quarterly reports marked out?
I was just gonna ask that.
I think the quarterly reports were marked out because of ninety percent of the teachers completing the Read Act training, and therefore, the, the lessened need of providing more frequent reports around who's being trained and who's not being trained.
Two got pushed back a year, so we'll need it again when they start phase two.
For secondary. Okay, that makes sense. All right. Okay, then.
There was no training that, like, school board members needed to take on that?
There is, of course, a teacher strand and admin strand, but I don't think it's the board director strand. Okay, um, so then we have negotiations, um. So, anybody, I'm, you know, looking toward the negotiations people, team are cutting. If this all looks correct? I don't think there need changes to negotiations, by Stacy. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not for this, I don't think, no, I think it's fine.
Okay.
I did have a couple of suggestions that didn't really fall in any of these buckets, so.
Okay.
Completely open to suggestion on where they might belong. April, May, a pro pay close session. That's typically, you know, we always have to receive a report on pro pay.
At the end of budget?
Hmm?
At the end of budget?
That could be in the budget, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And then, in November, sometime November to January, every three to four years, Safety and Security Close Session with ETD and EFD. Because that seems to get lost in the shuffle. You know, we had one last year, and before that, I think it had been quite some time.
Oh, you said three to four years, but given how many new board members we have since last fall, I wonder if we should think about doing one this fall?
Yeah.
Or over the winter even?
And maybe keep it, I was thinking November to Jan, November to January, because for us, it's kind of a downtime.
Right.
I don't know what it is for the city folks, so. But, yeah, not a bad idea.
They would do the same with Egan and Savage? Because I, it's always been, if anything, in an Egan school or an Egan school or a Savage school, we'd be working with Ron, especially in party departments.
Yep, in the past, one other security close session I attended, I'm trying to remember. Ransfield was definitely there, Savage might have been there.
It was worth extending an invitation, but, um, see if they show up, yeah, see if they would make it.
And I guess the question is, logistically, and maybe this is up to you and your team to determine, Dr. Daniels, but is it one with all? Or is it one separate, because each of them is a different municipality, different staff? I don't know.
That must be to create its own category, because I don't know where you would put that.
Yeah, yep, and maybe what we do is just, yeah, create the new category, and this can come back once we figure that out.
That was what I had. Okay. That's the end of the document, right? Okay. Um, yeah, like, am I at the end? Okay, um, so. Probably okay then to move on to our next. Okay. Our next item.
Oh, sorry. So, you're, one of you will be asking Sarah to update it, and then we brought back at a future board meeting.
Yes, yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
Our next item up for discussion is to review Policy 206, Listening Session Protocols and Guidelines. Before diving into our discussion, I would like to call on Dr. Daniels to lay down some background related to the proposed changes.
Thank you again, Chair Word. I propose to our Chair and Vice Chair, Chair Word and Vice Chair, alter a change in our Listening Session signup procedures. There were three reasons why I would like to propose the changes. First, to create a more efficient process. Right now, I think about, up until today, if I just use today for an example, today, when I checked in with Sarah, at 5:30, we had no one signed up for Listening Sessions. However, at 5:37, we had two guests sign up for Listening Sessions. And so, you know, wanting to be more efficient and streamline the process and move away from this uncertainty or this wait and see to more certainty around who is showing up to sign up or speak at Listening Sessions. up to sign up or speak at listening sessions. Um, the second reason is it will allow us to be more prepared, um, be more planful and prepared, for example, when we have, and I've experienced my own experience in my former school district, and I've heard that this is played out in the school district as well, when we have multiples, um, sign up for, um, listening sessions, and we just find out right before the listening session, we have our team running around trying to reconfigure space and provide appropriate, um, whatever amenities, support for those who need to speak. And so I think, again, it will allow us to be more proactive and prepared for, um, who's going to speak, um, at the listening session and the arrangements that need to be made. And then I think overall, it just provides a more positive culture, because I do believe in transparency, and I do believe in, um, relational, um, relationally building that trust, um, and I don't think that that's just a one-way street, I think that is, that works two ways. And so I see, um, an opportunity for, um, our team to be transparent about the process, and again, ensuring that we are allowing, um, voice at both meetings, um, but also is being courteous to our, our board directors and as well as our team, and ensuring that we are more informed as well. So I think it aids in a more positive culture, which you will hear more about when I speak about my goals. Um, I, in broaching this conversation with Chair Word and with Vice Chair Alt, I have always been open about, um, the number of days we provide for people to sign up. We did have guests at our, um, listening session today to speak about, um, the, the concern about signups being on a Monday, and I, I hear that concern, because if board packets, so I clarify with Sarah, when do board packets go live? And she said, board packets go live Monday at noon, so that will pose a conflict, and we definitely don't want to impede voice around, um, the process. That, that's not the goal, the goal is what I, um, listed and shared. But I do want us to be more proactive and, um, have a more streamlined, efficient process that invites planfulness and a positive, um, school culture. So, um, I have shared the rationale for the change in, um, process, I've also done additional research and found that this is a practice across, um, six districts that, um, I had Sarah, um, checking to where, where people have to sign up in advance. Um, we will, and it's located in our, um, guidelines, how we will roll this out, in which there will be multiple modalities in which people can sign up. You can sign up either online, which would be new, you can also call Sarah, or you can also, um, email Sarah, but, you know, I would appreciate us considering, um, a desire to shift more into a proactive maintenance instead of a wait-and-see, um, situation. So, this is where I'm proposing to you all to discuss.
Well, I think also, I, I, um, was a listener at a listening session where, um, we expected multiple, multilingual speakers, and we needed to provide interpreters, and I remember, um, this going, that staff needed to do, to be prepared for that, and we want to be prepared, um, and getting that short notice, it's not always possible.
And we, along that line, because I did forget to mention interpreters, thank you for mentioning, um, interpreter, Vice Chair Word, I mean, yes, Vice Chair Alt and Sarah Word. Um, and, and as a district that aims to be inclusive, inclusive of all voices, um, we do want to provide the support so all voices can, um, be heard, but all voices can hear what others are hearing as well. So, um, thank you for, um, adding that piece as well.
I think it's critical we address the need for the gap between the final agenda going up and when that deadline is, otherwise it's giving efficiency at the expense of what the, um, listening sessions are supposed to be about, and most people are going to be bringing forward something that they see on the agenda that's going to be discussed, as opposed to a random topic that they would show up to talk about that week, and the people showing up before the meeting or just before the meeting are, it's to the seeing something on the agenda, and that's a, from a transparency standpoint and what we're ultimately trying to get out of them, I think that's critical, and as... Personally, if I'm signing up to do it, I'm gonna, I'm going to be here anyway, so...
And also, if you're, if you're a speaker that has a topic on your mind unrelated to an agenda, you still can come at any meeting to share that.
I think, um, something that concerns me about it being, needing to be so many days in advance, is, um, if, if on a Tuesday, something comes up in, in my world and I want to talk to the board about it, um, now I have to wait a full two weeks before I get to, um, to do that. And I think, as somebody who has shown up to say things, uh, you know, that, that's fair, that doesn't, yeah, that's fair, that's fair.
And again, I want to repeat that, when I found out that the packet goes live on Monday at noon, we know it can't be Monday, that's, that's not fair to, that's not fair to our community.
Do you have a proposed alternative?
Um, the general practice is that it is by noon the day before the board meeting.
Exactly what I was gonna say.
So when, so when, yeah, so when's it by noon? And in discussing this with Sarah, I have not discussed this with my Chair or Vice Chair yet, but in discussing that with, um, Sarah, we also talked about, again, when you think about stringlining, when you all, you know, prepare questions for our team to respond to, and Sarah pushes out, collects that information and pushes out that information to you all, if we have that information by noon on that day preceding the school board meeting, that information can also be included, so those board representatives who, um, are planning to attend the listening session will know if they necessarily need to show up, and these are the topics in which people will be speaking to, and so all of that information can be rolled into one bundle and pushed to you all in, in advance to, to see sure that you're communicating and you're aware of what you should expect on the day of board meeting.
And noon and the day before will give you and your team adequate time?
Uh, yes, I think we could work with noon the day before, yes.
Um, did I see in here, though, that we were asking, like, if you needed an interpreter to add, like, for a full week ahead, no time? Did I see that?
You did see that in, um, yes, you did see that in number, number ten, mm-hmm.
And, uh...
But again, again, that can be some language that we adjust in order to, you know, work more expediently. Again, we're also talking about why it's more courteous if we know in advance, because if we need an interpreter, we need to find that interpreter. Um, and so it, you know, just enough time for us to do what we need to do in order to support, we need to support.
So with the online form, which I think is great, I, I love the idea of at least having that as an option for people to register for listening sessions, would they, would it be, always be, this is the form for the next board meeting on such and such a date, or would there be an option to potentially select that I, I, I can't go to the August twenty eighth meeting, but I would love, I want to speak at the September eleventh meeting?
In my former district, I think that they, you know, offered like the next three, in that-
Yeah, you want to do it like six months out or anything.
Yeah, in that district, listening sessions of public comment was only offered once, uh, once a month.
Okay.
And so they would have the, the dates listed per month in which listening sessions would be offered, and so we definitely could offer-
Have that as an option on the form.
Yes, mm-hmm, yes.
I really like the idea of an online signup, yeah.
As long as there are non-online options also, which it sounds like-
Yes, absolutely.
-still-
We do not, we do not want to impede access at all, so phone calls, emails, online options, that's, that all works, and it's actually already here in, um, number one, that we are providing that as, as an option. Another thing that was, um, shared during the listening session is that if we will, if we do have an online form, how do we make it very visible, um, and accessible on our website? And so that would be something that we need to be mindful of, you know, and we go there.
Click links, by the way, yeah. And I think it also would be fair to mention that if the dates and times of the listening session, um, don't work for the individual, the superintendent is always available.
Absolutely.
And as we can attest, we also get emails.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So, there's, there's many ways to choose.
My doors are open.
I'm just wondering, as far as any kind of transition period, maybe, as far as, like, we, we have it all posted, and we have lots of notices, but we give people a month or two, you know, if they show up at a listening session expecting to go out of college or whatever.
You know, and, and just, you know, and having notices at the listening session about, hey, this is happening, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, we had a few weeks, you know, people come more than once, um, you know, since I've been on the board, and, you know, but, I mean, I know a lot of people kind of are one and done, they have certain issues they want to address, and so, you know, they may, you know, it, it may not help to get that message out there so much, but just maybe a possible transition period.
Yeah.
What, how long would you all like the trans- transition period to be?
I was gonna think, you know, one or two months, so that would be like two or four.
It doesn't go into the school year?
Yeah.
It's in here in September or October? So I don't think that-
I don't think, yeah.
And we can, that's like a thing we can push out, right? So...
If the Trump administration, if we want to build a better implementation date, maybe policy that, in fact, of November first or December first, or whatever the day might be, this is, this is, I mean, we kind of got that built into the policy with the transition plan.
It would be the regulations, but yes, yeah.
Regulations.
Going back to another comment about the interpreters, it's kind of, I've been thinking about it, um, I think the language that we have here, please contact the board administrative assistant one week prior, I think that's fair, because it's not, it's, it's not saying you must, it's just-
As a courtesy.
Yes, as a courtesy, and people will do as, as they do.
Or to guarantee an interpreter.
Well, that too, yeah, 'cause, I mean, if they-
We'll do our best.
Yeah, we'll do our best, if it's, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Any other concerns or questions, not the proposed process? Change? So is this already, like, written off, like, you just push a button and it's ready?
Sarah will watch the video, and she will hear all of our commentary, and, and- Yeah, Sarah will hear all of our commentary, she will condense it and, and clean up the language, of course, I will share, um, a clean proposal with our officers in preparation for, um, the P R C meeting, um, and since we have time, we can bring it before policy review and make sure it's ready to be implemented by, um, November.
And my concern in asking that we have this work session was, I didn't want to have the policy committee go make changes, it was a, it felt a little better just to hear from everybody, so that then we can go forward and just say, okay, this is what we talked about.
Of course. Um, our final work session agenda item is to review the superintendent goals for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, so at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Daniels to walk us through her proposed graph.
Thank you again, Chair Word. I, um, am presenting to each of my board directors my proposed goals for the twenty five, twenty six school year. I tried to model my goals after the N S B A, um, model, um, goal-setting template, um, for evaluations, and also in, um, hearing your feedback about my one hundred day transition plan, I'm trying to merge as much as possible and include as much as possible for my one hundred day transition plan in my goals. And so I have, um, four goal areas, um, and the first goal area is communication and community engagement goal. That is language from N S B A, the language that was in my one hundred day transition plan is community partnerships and engagement. The goal is to foster a culture of transparency, trust, and collaboration by establishing consistent channels of communication with stakeholders and engaging the broader school community through meaningful dialogue and outreach initiatives. There are key objectives that I have identified for each goal, um, that include, um, references on to my one hundred day transition plan, as well as other activities I plan to complete as well. So, for example, um, I would like to conduct listening sessions with families and community partners to understand perspectives and establish accessibility. So as I shared earlier, my door is open, I want to hear from families, I want to hear from our partners, and I want to hear from stakeholders. Launch a communications mechanism, a newsletter, district website, updates, et cetera, to share updates, decisions, and achievements regularly. Implement structured opportunities for stakeholders to provide input on district initiatives and priorities. Continue to highlight stories, voices, and accomplishments of students, teachers, and families to build a shared sense of community and pride in one nine one. Develop relationships with Burnsville, Eden, Savage City officials to underscore and support and willingness to partner, and continue partnerships with community partners and organizations. In school district, school district operations goal, which was in my, um, one hundred day plan, is operations and management. The goal is to establish a facilities management plan that ensures safe, functional, and future-ready learning environments through collective planning, transparent budgeting, and stakeholder engagement and collaboration. Key objectives, review the current L T F M plan to determine the needs of buildings, work with the administrative services director, Stacy Sozine, to identify a consultant and team to plan and prioritize the work over the next three to five years, align budgetary and personnel resources to the execution of the plan, and determine the next steps around the school name change process. Under teaching and learning, I have a goal to establish a district-wide culture of collaborative, aligned leadership, and instructional excellence by building trusting relationships, aligning strategic priorities, and fostering continuous improvement across all levels of district one nine one in the first twelve months. Key objectives, conduct listening sessions with directors, principals, staff, students, families, and community partners to identify strengths and opportunities, analyze academic and demographic data to inform strategic planning, resource allocation, facilitate monthly leadership professional development focused on effective communication, instructional leadership, and equity-driven practices, work with the school board and leadership team to update or create a district strategic plan that reflects current needs and vision, and assess and launch initiatives aimed at ensuring equitable access to learning opportunities and culturally responsive practices district-wide. And finally, climate and culture, the goal is to foster a culture of transparency, trust, and collaboration by establishing consistent channels of communication with stakeholders and engaging the broader school community through meaningful dialogue and outreach initiatives. I will conduct listening sessions with directors, principals, staff, students, families, community partners to understand perspectives and establish accessibility, meet with the D E A president frequently to build a collaborative relationship, implement structured opportunities for stakeholders to provide input on district initiatives and priorities, and continue to highlight stories, voices, and accomplishments of students, teachers, and families to build a shared sense of community, trust, and pride in one nine one. Culture and climate is important for all of this to be successful, and so that is culture and climate with a big C as well as a little c, so these are my goals that I'm proposing for the twenty five, twenty six school year, and I would like your feedback at this time.
I like that you called out in the line that, like, the N S B A ones, I thought that was nice.
I like the consistency of the connections across our school community. Two suggestions, um, on operations, uh, so thinking back- Two suggestions, um, on operations, uh, so thinking back to, um, Vision 191, I remember, uh, the leadership team being actively engaged in that effort, and it wasn't just a single, um, member of your E L T that, that was driving that, um, because marketing has a unique role to play, teaching and learning another unique role, and I would, I would like to know, I, I would like to suggest that, um, that you consider that, um, given the breadth of what you're going to be talking about.
Vision, whatever the Vision 191, structuralized, okay.
Yeah.
We need to definitely talk more about that.
Okay, cool. Climate and culture, just at that, um, yes, for sure, meeting with, um, the, the E A president makes complete regular, it makes sense. Um, you might also want to consider meeting with other, um, C V U leaders, not on necessarily a schedule, but just including them because they also have insights to share.
Right, right, yeah.
That means the, are they bargaining units?
Yes, I, I figured out the acronym. I figured out that.
I meant to include anybody's...
Yeah, another bargaining unit.
No, sorry.
Yeah. I put it together. Had to use context rules.
We, we, we have, what, how many bargaining?
Yes.
I also agree that's a good thing to include in there. I would just, different people have different interpretations of words like frequently, so it might be good, you know, quarterly, twice every other month.
We need twice a month.
Twice a month.
Twice a month.
Like, might just be good to be a little more clear about. I agree. My definition of frequently may be indifferent than last week's.
Yep. I'm doing it correctly, directed human.
Directed human. We've already met twice.
As needed, that's great.
As needed. As needed is frequently enough, that is. That's great. That's, that was my, my main comment, so.
Oh, thank you.
And I really appreciated the thought of this, of, of how you structured this and the, and the content of the goals, I think.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, it's the mark.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you all, thank you all so much.
It's very detailed, and also some, I think someone who is external, if they saw this, they would have somewhat of an understanding of what your priorities are, and I think that's as important as this group, knowing what they are, as someone sees it on YouTube or on district website, or wherever, you know, these, wherever these things get posted, that, that they can see that, oh, that's what she does, oh, hey.
Thank you very much.
I just like how it's very intentional. Yes. Thank you, Chair Word. All right. Does anyone else have any comments or... All right. Um, this concludes our work session. The final item on our agenda is a close session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D .03 to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time to discuss labor negotiation strategy?
No motion.
Motion by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The time is now 8:43, and we will move to the H R conference room to discuss labor negotiation strategy and return to our open meeting immediately following the closed session. However, please note that having no further agenda items after the closed session, we will not be returning to the dais upon completion of the meeting.